My pleasure.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
My name is Cindy Simpson.
Here.
Mayor Popeye, Breck Porter.
Here.
Trustee Cory Javart.
Here.
Trustee David Payton.
Here.
Trustee Daniel Hennig.
Here.
Trustee Nick Manning.
Here.
Trustee Andreas Sisparza. Bureau of Energy and Water Affairs.
Here.
All right, uh, first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have many seconds. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I can't vote. Ah, twenty years is hard to change. Uh, all right.
Fuck you.
I know, just elbow me. Yeah. Um, all right, so, uh, I, I have a short little thing to read about audience business and then we will go in to audience business. There are some folks signed up. So, all people, this is kind of the short form, uh, the longer version is on the agenda. Um, but kind of the bullet points are, all people wishing to address the board shall do so from the podium provided in the boardroom. Uh, you'll state your name and address for the record. And comments shall be directed to the Board of Trustees, not out to the audience. Public comments regarding items not on the agenda shall be limited to five minutes per person. And public comments regarding public hearing items on the agenda will be limited to three minutes per person at the time the item comes up on the agenda. No person shall be allowed to speak until recognized by the mayor. And the board will not respond to citizen comments or take any action during the audience business. Um, because we can't take action on things that aren't on our agenda for decision. Um, we may instruct staff at the end of the meeting if, uh, we desire further action, um, by the majority of the board. Right? Okay, so, having said that, um, we will go into audience business and first person is Mark Worth.
Thank you, trustee, and I'm, my name's Mark Worth. I live at seven, I'm sorry, uh, ten seven fifty. This is the location where your water is. You do have an additional diversion out of the lake. If this is one of your two sources. If you look at this map, you'll see in brown near the top, the property that we own. And, uh, a, uh, ditch P O D there marked at the top, which is where your water's coming from. That water travels across my property and then goes across property that's marked as elder there. And then goes on to the one, um, off to the left there, B and B Ranches, L C C. I apologize, they don't have access to water. So, basically, the pipeline itself is traveling over our property, the elder property. It goes through a little corner of the Robbins Family Ranch piece, like, uh, about three hundred feet, I believe, and then goes on to the B and B Ranches. Perhaps one of the reasons why, uh, you're not comfortable, uh, giving me, uh, the water that's listed in the easement, uh, from eighteen or nineteen sixties, is that the, perhaps, since the property was divided from a very large piece, you are meeting your obligations on another piece of property. Um, I'd like to explain to you that, um, I own the brown piece there with my wife. Um, the pink piece marked elder was part of the redder range. Um, and has been historic, um, for a lot more than, from much earlier than nineteen sixty. And then the B and B Ranch was owned by the same owners, uh, Shepherds, who owned my parcel and with whom you had the easement agreement dated nineteen sixty. Um, on that pipeline, there is one tap on the elder property. There is one tap on the, uh, Robbins Family Ranch property, and there is one tap on B and B Ranches. The agreement asked or called for two taps, one of which is being used on B and B Ranches. Um, there has been apparently some confusion about whether a second tap on that property was in use, but that other tap had been abandoned when the pipeline was changed from, uh, steel to plastic. And I'm not sure exactly when that happened. But at that time, one tap became obsolete. It was tied into a pipe that had no water in it and had been abandoned. And the replacement tap is currently serving, um, two houses on B and B Ranches. The deeds are very clear. The rest of the property that Shepherd owned was up above, um, on the plateau above this area. Um, and it is not a- anywhere near your pipeline. And I think your water department can clearly confirm that there are currently three taps. One on the elder property, one on the Robbins Family Ranch being used by the, uh, Don Yomen, and one on B and B Ranches. Um, there is no second tap that was allocated to anyone, um, on property that it was owned by Shepherd at the time of the nineteen sixty. Now, on the second page, you see again, water overflowing. Now, there has been some contention that perhaps this was a leak or a mistake of some kind. The pipeline literally would not function without this overflow. It allowed water to go through the par shelf and be measured at one point six C F F's and then went down the hill. This overflow kept the ponds in town from overflowing and allowed water to be regulated from the bottom without the pipeline ever going dry. Having a half-dry pipeline is really problematic. Um, and if you had more water than that, it would have had to come up to the property on a daily basis.
Marshall.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We'll try and talk in this kind of detail as we go forward.
Why? All right.
Thank you.
Um, next person on the list is Wayne Epic.
Good evening. Uh, my name, uh, my name is Wayne Epic. I live at eight six two nine, Road forty-one in Mankas. Uh, I was a founding member of Mankas Valley Resources way back in the day. And, uh, I'm on a couple of other boards here. And, uh, just listening to your, uh, workshop, I would like to make a couple of comments that I think are really important going forward. Uh, number one, that's really important to your, to your public, is please don't speak in acronyms all the time. It's really difficult to follow if you're a general public. They have no idea what you're talking about. Like the Conservation Office, it would really be helpful to you if you built a poster with all the acronyms that hangs on the wall in here that people can reference. I mean, just from what I heard, you know, it's research from D O A at C W B C at C dot for C I P. You talk in those like we can, it's relevant to you, but the general public has no clue of what you're talking about. And you'll lose volunteers and you'll lose support very rapidly because they feel that you're talking above them and it's kind of insulting. So, please be aware of all your meetings that you explain and that you leave the acronyms to a, to a bare minimum. It's really important, so. And the other thing that I was, found quite amusing is, uh, slowing people down. Do you realize you have two hundred and twenty-seven stop signs in town? You have a stop sign for about basically every nine people in town. And that's fine. I just found it quite amusing as a quasi guilty party rolling through stop signs.
Marshall's back there.
But that's basically all I had is, uh, just be careful when you're addressing the public and you're trying to generate support for some of your projects. Is be well aware of how your, how sensitive your public is to the message that you're portraying. Don't leave anybody out by not speaking the language that they're used to.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Quasi, huh?
All right. Uh, next up is David Malkin.
Mallon.
Mallon, sorry. You got the wrong glasses on tonight.
David Mallon, six nine three Wesker End. So, I'm returning to the board to bring up again the idea of rebranding Mankas. The community is going to change and a shift, and especially with opportunities like with Main Street that could bring a lot of wonderful things to the community. With, uh, the creative things going on in this town, we have six bands based here. We have a lot of galleries, a lot of artists, a lot of writers. Our cultural scene here is, is really prospering. And, um, it's my opinion to change the branding for the community. To have something really vibrant that will be a draw into the community. To have a nod to the past with an image of whatever it is, a brand, uh, horse, uh, lasso, whatever it might be in, in the brand that we come up with, there should be a nod to the past. There should also be, um, the concept of a gateway, an open gateway to Mesa Verde, since that is our designation. And, um, something really vibrant that will show that we are a creative community. And it's my intent to, uh, gather, uh, a group of people from the town, the Chamber, the Mankas Creative District, whatever other coalitions are forming for future development to come up with a kind of a coalition for, uh, our branding and for promoting our town. And once that's done and once there's this new logo or brand that the signage reflects that, and then talk with the park officials about a kiosk at Mesa Verde. Now, the reason I say this is because most of the visitors are making the loop from Las Vegas through the national parks in Utah, sleeping or staying in Cortez. They don't come to Mankas. And so if we have a kiosk up there, um, and there could be possible funding from Main Street if that happens, or, or the public art, um, monies that you, you put out annually for public art in the community, um, there could be funds for the kiosk and for creating a competition to come up with that logo with the parameters of the open gate, the nod to the past, something vibrant for the present and future. And so I just wanted to bring that up again to the board that I think it's time, um, with things in motion as we design what our future looks like, um, that, that, uh, our branding goes along with these changes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we have Monazuma County Commission update, Gerald.
Good evening. This past week in Monazuma County, we actually put a moratorium for six months on solar projects to be in, presented to us. We had one of them that was already, the application had already been submitted. I'm going to allow that one to go on through, but we are going to put a moratorium on for six months till we can get better language in our land use code to make sure that these things are taken care of properly when it's time, when it's time to decommission. That's what our main concern is, but I, I have lots of concerns about them myself, but that's, that's going to be a decision of the board, but. Uh, the other thing that's, that's happened with the Ironwood deal is that it has all been on, now it's all in bankruptcy. Too many years probably for anything gets done with that mess up there. That's what concerns me about these. I don't want thirty years from now when they're not usable anymore, these pounds. They say they're recyclable, but what worries me is making sure that somebody's going to be responsible for doing that when it comes time to that. And to make sure that this land goes back to what it was before. A lot of the rules that tell them they have to go back to seventy percent of what it is now. Well, as far as I'm concerned, they're going to put it back like it was. If they do that, if this gets approved, as far as I'm concerned, they should put it back like it was, not seventy percent of what's there. Because any, any farmer out here will tell you, if you've fouled that ground for more than three years, it takes quite a few years for you to get it back to where there's any production on that land at all. So, all those things have to be taken into consideration in my mind as to what can happen that far down the road. The owner, because they're leasing these properties. They're not actually buying them. They don't have ownership in them. So, there's, there's a lot of issues that has to be addressed. That's the biggest thing coming down, other than trying to deal with all the different problems from the state with the new, all the new regulations that are trying to pass. I was at Southwest Water Conservation Board all afternoon at a meeting over there. We need to get in the morning. Had a lot of discussion on where these Colorado River tops are going, and it's not looking good. I actually called all of the water commissioners from all the seven states back to Washington to meet with the Bureau of Reclamation. I think that happened yesterday or the day before. Basically, give them a deadline, told them, you will get something worked out. And it gave until, I think, the fifteenth or twentieth of May. So, they got about a month, five, four or five weeks. And I think at that time, if they don't get something worked out between the states, then the Bureau of Reclamation is just going to take it over and do it themselves. That's what I think will happen. Because they, they've got to get their E I S done and put out there to the public for a period of time, because these new guidelines have to be in place by October of next year. They have to be in place by then, because that's when the water year starts, first of November next year. So, they've got to be in place by then. And the Bureau of Reclamation's not going to mess around with it. They're going to do something with, they have to. And the status quo is not going to work. You can see that by the way they drain those reservoirs. So, they've got to do something. That's one of the big things that's coming down as far as federally and that's going to affect our whole area. There's already threatened to be lawsuits against it, against the E I S and against the Bureau of Reclamation by the lower basin states, so it's, it could be a real mess. The Lord, the Bureau of Reclamation actually ha, they are actually the water cop for those lower basin states, but they do not have that authority to the upper basin states. Because they control those reservoirs. And basically, they are the water cop for the lower basin. So, if you look at who's to blame for what's going on there, as far as I'm concerned, it's the Bureau of Reclamation. They've let them do it. They've let them drain those reservoirs and put us in this situation. So, that's just a few things that's going on. Um, there is some other things coming through the state, but I don't know if they'll get signed into law or not. It's going to affect our water and stuff. The new measurement rules for this division is going through the final process right now. And so, probably within the next year, they'll start having meetings here around this area to present those rules and start the enforcement on them. So, all of that will go into effect too. Everybody's measurement license, whether it's town or whatever, it's going to have to be in there properly and, and level and measure correctly. That's what it amounts to. And it's going to cost some people some money. A lot of people have diversions that don't have a lot of that stuff in there because, just like on the Anus River over there, it's not fully appropriated. So, there's all extra water, so they've never really enforced in some of those areas like that. There's not very many rivers that are like that, but that's one that is. So, a lot of those, they don't have measures on it for anything because they, they, they haven't ever had to put it on a call or anything, so. Anyway.
All right. Thank you, Gerald.
That ought to keep me busy.
Yeah, that ought to keep us up. Um, all right, announcements.
Um, May nineteenth is the Spring C M O Conference. We, uh, secured, we're going to host it at Fensline. The Bell House is going to provide food and Moon Dog is providing desserts. And we did order bags and little cookies and all kinds of stuff.
Okay, time.
Was it May what?
May nineteen.
Nineteen.
Um, five P M will be the meet and greet and happy hour, and then, uh, six P M will be the dinner and the meeting. And you will get two trip tickets.
May nineteen. What time?
All right. Cool, thank you.
I just have two other questions, potentially for the future agenda. Region nine and, uh, Southwest Transportation, C D O's Regional Southwest Transportation Committee. Um, it's time to bring up our designated representatives. Region nine is currently Mankas primary, adjacent is alternate, and C D O Southwest is unprimary and Brent is alternate. If you are fine with those, that's fine. If you want to change it, if there's somebody else that's interested, I can put this item on the next agenda.
Anybody want to bail? All right. Anybody want to join? Looks like we didn't let them stand.
I just became that, so I.
Yeah.
Stick with it, it's fine.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Because we have so many C D O employees on the board here.
Right.
Yep.
Kind of, and that's what we do.
Jerks.
All right. Anything else? Anything from the board, announcements? All right. Moving on to consent agenda items, approval of the minutes of March twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and March bills and claims. I would entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
And the consent agenda?
Yeah, the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second? No? All in favor say aye.
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 Oh, God, I can't vote. You're supposed to select me. All right. Testing you. All right. I've been doing so well. Uh, all right, so.
Get it, I'll hit you with it.
Did you, right there. All right, uh, discussion and action items, Cottonwood Park Weed Management Contract.
I'm going to go to Terry and Melissa.
Okay.
Well, as you guys are aware, we put out R F P for weed management at Cottonwood Park. And that was either for traditional or organic treatment. We had a mandatory walkthrough. We had one contractor show up and we had one bid. And I made a recommendation on that bid, but before you decide, I would like to throw another idea out there. We could do it, take care of Cottonwood in-house. We have seasonals at, uh, Cottonwood Park once a week and we're, the Public Works Crew is Cottonwood brush hogging once a week, if it's real wet season or every two weeks if it's drought. So, we could take care of Cottonwood Park, that's the board's wishes, or we could go with, uh, bonfire management. But I just wanted to give you that other, that other option. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, what, like, so, we, we did the walkthrough, we got the bid. What kind of laws are, are around that? Like, because we started the process, are we held to finishing it? Or can we back off?
So, you are not, so, once we start the process, we are obligated to, are obligated to be, uh, accepting and reviewing this.
Okay.
Once we review the minutes, you are not obligated to accept any of the bids.
Okay.
You have a couple of options. As long as we follow the process that we laid out in the R F P, you could say, you know what, we only got one bid, we want you to try again, we're going in a different direction, or you could take the bid that was the bid. So, we followed the process up to this point, and now you have some options.
Okay. Thoughts, Cory?
Um, I guess a couple of things. One would be, what does it do, like workload-wise for staff? And then, what, any idea what the cost of function would be? Is it something that would like be beneficial or be kind of a wash just more?
We would do everything in-house, and we already have seasonals down there once a week, weed eaten around fences and everything, and they could be looking for weeds. Um, Public Works is down there either every week or every two weeks brush hogging, and it would just be part of our daily routine. And from, it would only save us like twenty-six hundred bucks, but it's whatever the board would like.
And if we saw an option with weeds on the A-list, we are going to spot spray them. It is not going to be any of them.
Okay.
Now, we would only spot spray them. We're not going to broadcast spray them. But we would not be using them here.
Next, what?
I don't really feel strongly either way. I mean, I don't want to add to your workload. Do you think it's manageable, given the current workload?
I think so. While we have a full crew.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, these guys obviously know the park and take care of the park, and there's some value there for sure. Yeah, that's all we got.
Daniel?
Yeah, I agree, the overlapping work makes sense. They've already got eyeballs on it, so that would save, you know, part from a productivity standpoint, uh, seems to make sense. And then, I mean, they're, they're going to be there much more often than bonfire, so it would be then a more continual and frequent, you know, higher fidelity kind of management rather than, what is this, one or two treatments? So, I think that would, yeah, but I think then doing a spot spray with more eyeballs on it more often seems to make sense to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with, if, as long as you think that it's something that you're, you and your seasonals can handle, that's, then it's not going to increase your workload too heavily, heavily. I think it's fine. that's, that's not gonna increase your workload too heavily, heavily, I think it's fine.
Would you do it for this summer and then revisit it next?
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I'm, I mean, I'm fine with that.
Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
Who's that cowboy?
I moved it.
You should have seen how slowly he quietly put that.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Just to make sure I'm clear, if we do it in-house at spot treatments, not a full broadcast like this, like the proposed.
That's another reason to have.
I have a couple of questions that came up while you were talking. Do we have anybody on staff that's like a certified weed applicator? Do we need to have somebody have that licensing or certification? And then would we have like a safe storage place and the right P P E? Because most of the chemicals, like I I pulled the M S D S sheets for the chemicals that uh Bonfire said, and most of them are, the the biggest danger is the applicator, you know, whoever's spraying and around it when it's wet.
Are you using Avenger? Is that the one that you use?
We have used Avenger, yeah. And we have rubber boots, rubber gloves, we have the little mask. We have safety glasses regardless.
It's the same stuff you'd be using on the right of ways that you're already spraying across town, right? For the spot spray. So it's the stuff that we're already using. On our public right of way for town. It's not like we're getting something different.
Yeah, I I just wanna make sure that however we're doing it, that we have all the ducks in a row, you know? Because I don't want anybody to get hurt, you know, while they're applying the spray. I would
We don't need a motion then, do we, for this, for this part, since we're not approving a bid?
If you're not approving a bid and contract, probably a motion, I would just like for for staff's clarity. Is there consensus to keep this in-house, the the weed treatment at Cottonwood Park in-house this season?
Sounds like it.
Let's, but let's put a little post-it though on it. Uh, let's revisit it after the summer and and do a review and see how it went.
I guess to that point, why haven't we done this in the past?
Because they, this was our Go ahead.
This is the first time, well, in the last year that we had a full crew. And with full crew, I think it's doable. And in the past, we've been running Public Works with like two to three people. So we do have a full crew. And nothing against organic, but this is gonna save quite a bit money.
Do you, do you feel like it's in a condition now that gives you a good starting point?
Yes.
Okay.
Of the season and then pictures of the park and this.
Absolutely.
I've got, I've got a drone you can borrow and take some overheads too. You want it.
Try to pick up in the same spot if you could, when you do it, so that we have friendly watching. So we know, we can see like the same trees and stuff in the pictures besides the giant. Thank you.
I'm serious, yeah.
Okay, um, I would just, I'm sure you would already think of this, but maybe just send them a little thank you for doing this, we're gonna try something and see if it works and
Can I maybe run into staffing issues or any other issues that we have this season? We'll bring this, we'll reach out.
Okay, cool. Alright, well, moving on. Uh, sales tax ballot question discussion.
So I'm looking for some feedback from you all. We've been discussing a sales tax increase of point four percent. Um, and what we're looking for at this point in the meeting is do two things. One, do we want to do this in November as a coordinating election? Or do we want to do this in April as part of our regular municipal election? And number two, you guys have kinda talked a little bit about the board doing the public outreach um, prior to any resolutions or ordinances, so where do you want that outreach to happen? Is kind of our, our, those are the two things that staff is looking for, because if you wanna do the coordinating election, we need to get um an agreement in place, their calendar starts in June or July, correct? So, but if you wanna do it in April, that allows the board to do some outreach over the summer. To have the temperature of the um community event potentially help um provide information, correct misconceptions. So it's a, it's a two, that's what we're looking for.
Okay, bit of feedback. We'll start with Nick.
Yeah, I like the idea of the coordinated election, just, I think it's, um, yeah, I think we'd get better turnout.
This fall?
Yeah, November. Yeah, I think we'll get better turnout.
Okay, David?
Fall, this fall. My concern about fall is just that the school has their mill levy and we'll be competing with that. Yep.
I would suggest, if they firm that
I think they have.
They haven't affirmed it up to a hundred percent yet, but they are leaning heavily towards it.
Yeah, it's not a hundred percent.
Then you have, you're more impacted than me then. Makes sense.
Yeah, it would be my only thing. I wouldn't wanna have two on the same one, that would not work great for either.
I'm leaning towards the spring, um, for two reasons. One, because it's pretty apparent that the school district is gonna push for the um fall for theirs. And also because I do think, because we didn't get it on the last one, um, it's, a lot of time has gone past since that. And so I think we need to do more outreach with the community. And I think this would get, cause once we, once we do the resolution, we can't talk about it in the community. So we have to have somebody sell this to the community for us. And so I think we need to get some volunteers lined up that are willing to go out to the community and speak for us on this. And I think Mankas Days is a great opportunity for us to be able to do some outreach in the community. We could do a booth at Mankas Days, have discussions with the community, clear up misconceptions about what this money is gonna go towards. And try to get volunteers that will help sell this to the community once we do a resolution. And really get people behind this. Cause I I really don't wanna do this after putting it off for a year, just for it to fail. Because we've already put it, put it back for a year, I would really hate to just rush it now just to get it on the ballot in November, just to see it fail, because we're putting it up against another, another tax increase.
Well, the school just gave up, uh, I mean, basically, I was disappointed they gave up on the housing project, but the reason was because they wanted to give as much chance to the mill levy, that was one of the primary reasons. So I think we wanna pay attention to that and try to work with the school on this too.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'm just gonna run down the row and ask spring or fall, did you have a question?
I'm sorry, is the school doing a mill levy question or a sales tax question?
Theirs is a mill levy.
Alright, Corey, spring or fall?
Spring.
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 Spring, yeah, spring.
Okay. Alright.
So how um, how much effort do you as the board want to put into this? Do you want staff to secure the Mankas Days for you all to take turns? Do you want us to secure the Burofest? Do you want us to secure the farmers market? Do you want us to plan some town halls for you? Uh, or, and I, I do think that um board should have a very difficult facing moment in this. Um, but staff is also having to do whatever outreach is necessary.
I like Brent's idea about the events for sure. I think trustees being out there would, would be good, I think.
So, just from a perspective of somebody who's done booths at different events in town, um, Borough Fest is a great event. It's quick, it's fast, it's a lot of people. It's a lot of people from outside the town. So it's, we're not gonna give a great mix of our own electorate on that day for bang for our buck. Mankas Days is a lot about Mankas, we get a lot of people from Mankas, and it's spread over a couple of days. Um, especially the Friday and Saturday. Um, I think that would be more beneficial to do. And I also wanna circle back to this when we do our discussion about the comp plan. Because I think we can also use that booth to talk about our goals and our priorities for the comp plan. Because I think that would be a good way for us to put some of those priorities for our goals that we have in our comp plan in that booth and give some of the people the opportunity to rank some of those priorities and give some feedback to us so that we know what, we know what our priorities are. But we wanna see what the priorities of the citizens are, and this is an opportunity twofold for us to do that. So I think that would be beneficial.
What about Fourth of July?
Fourth of July is uh an interesting idea, but it's not really a, an event per se where they have booths and stuff set up.
Do you guys wanna hold some town hall meetings or some times?
I think that'd be a good opportunity as well.
It's a smart idea.
Yeah, throughout the fall, maybe.
Give us a pocket-sized talking points. Pull them out. This is why it's good.
So we'll work on that and then if you've got some town hall meeting ideas, I'll release it. We'll, we'll obviously let it back to you, but now we're gonna start, still in the beginning of twenty twenty six. We definitely wanna do the Mankas Days and we definitely wanna have town halls. Somebody thinks of something else or hears of something else, please feel free to call, okay? And I can bring it back, but that's going to start.
Okay, cool. Anything else on that? Alright, uh, moving on to Arbor Day proclamation. So as we all probably remember, we typically don't do proclamations anymore. However, this is a, a formal thing that we need to do to keep our status. Um, and so we had, uh, when we changed up how we do protocols, uh, or protocols. Proclamations, uh, last year, we did uh leave this on our schedule, so. What's that?
You said we don't wanna mess that up.
Right, I know. Um, so I just read it. Okay, alright. Uh, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agricultural Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed through the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Cindy Simpson, Mayor of the Town of Mankas, Colorado, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-five, twenty twenty-five Arbor Day in the Town of Mankas, Colorado. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Uh, dated this ninth of April, twenty twenty-five, and then I'll sign it. So. At that sign, alright. Sorry, I've been teaching all day, so my voice is rough. Alright, so comprehensive plan discussion.
So you guys have been, um, just started discussions on this and what we've, where we've started is, um, here are the actual goals in the comp plan. Um, that you wanted to potentially review or wasn't sure if the discussion moment is, do we wanna look at these? Do we wanna change something? Do we wanna update them? And then, um, we also, I took the work plan and added a column to relate the projects back to the comp plan when necessary. Some things like replacing server, sometimes that's just not great. But, um, so I, I have a couple of questions. One, do you guys wanna talk about goals? Do you guys wanna create a dashboard? Do we want to do the role of this? Do you wanna put pictures in it? I guess I'm looking for some feedback from you all.
Definitely not this. Definitely not this.
Well, and these are just the goals that we check out of the current comp plan.
Right.
Because I do think there was consensus that you don't wanna review the entire comp. Make sure the goals are where they need to be, then we need to come up with some type of summary of our comp. Do you want that summary to be these goals without the lists and manuals, sorry? Or do you want to go straight to a dashboard that's only two or three pages and doesn't look like these goals well? There are a couple of different ways and I could not get a temperature from you all, I'm so sorry. Um, where do you want it to go?
So I, I think the goals are fine the way they are right now, it's just they read so interney, government-y. And I just, it's, it's just hard to read and not just wanna fall asleep or throw it across the room. Um, so I just think it just needs to be lightened and made more accessible. And kind of in the same vein as Wayne was saying today, make it just where you're not losing majority of the crowd the way that it's presented to people.
So just goals, do you like the objectives?
I like the objectives, but like I said earlier, I think, you know, before we put the objectives into any document, I would like to make sure that our objectives, in the, that we rank the priority in the way that the citizens kind of want them. So I think we wanna utilize that time that we have at Mankas Days and stuff to, to get some of that feedback on that. So I, I think as long as we're all good with the goals that we have and the priorities that are in there, I think maybe we'll wanna just take a break on this for a little bit until we get some of that feedback from the citizens before we continue this project.
Thank you. Nick?
Yeah, I just feel like I don't have my arms wrapped around it enough. And I think that's part of what I'm feeling, is like the inputs aren't there for me to really know how to be effective with kind of an overhaul of a comp plan. And I really like Silverton's flashy product, but getting from where we are today to there, I don't really feel grounded in what that process is supposed to be or look like. And I do think the part that's missing for me is the inputs. Like I can make things up about what I think the town should be like in five years and ten years, but I think that there's, it would be really wise of us to kind of yeah, get some inputs, make sure the community is filtered, or, you know, it seems to be there's multiple avenues where we're trying to collect that kind of information and like, you know, doing the town halls around the sales tax and the, and the main street stuff, and we're doing a lot of good effort that way. And I think the comp plan needs to kind of um come from some of this effort, both listening sessions, whatever, I just think. Yeah, I just don't feel like I have enough to go on.
Um, David?
Well, as always, I love the bullet points. I'm an engineer, so it reads perfect to me. I agree on the input, uh, it'd be nice to get some more input on the actual comp plan PDF. Heather, I went through and I added a whole bunch of comments, questions, et cetera. Should I just email that directly to you?
Please do.
Okay.
Because if, if it's substantive, it's something that the entire board is gonna need to talk about, which I find is stupid. We could go as fast as we're still able to go on this. Do you know what I mean? So, if it's substantive, then I'll, I'll bring it to the board and potentially in chapters. Um, but yeah, please send it to me so I can review the simple one. Okay?
Okay, uh, Cory?
I kinda echo what Brent said, um, to a degree. I, the goals are fine, I think the objectives, the way it's broken down, I can read it and understand it. But I can also see where, if we're trying to put this out and get information, I think we need to like boil this down and make it much more concise and digestible for everybody. Like to get, you know, their head wrapped around what it is, it's a lot. And unless they're paying attention to any specific part of it, a ton of it is gonna be like Greek. They're gonna be like, "Well, what are you talking about? What's wrong with the sidewalk? Or what's wrong with this?" Or, "I don't understand that." Um, so I think we, if we can figure out a way to deliver it in a more compact version, and then we always have the option, you know, obviously like a lot of things, we have, you know, fifteen objectives, you know, fifteen goals. You know, subcategories in with objectives, right? But if one is important to you, well, we can dive deeper into that one. But then they get information, get feedback, and then we can kinda get a little pulse on what is important to the people of the town and kinda ranking, you know, how we want this to look and then how, you know, which ones go together. You know, if it's like, "Well, these three are really important, two of them go together really well," like, that's great. So, I think, but it's definitely a lot.
David?
Ooh, I have a lot. Um, I'm mostly okay with the goals. I think we should shorten the wording of them. As kind of Cory was, was getting at, um, to make it more digestible. Um, we've got a problem with many of the objectives and the way that they were written, um, questions. Uh, yeah, so, I mean, we got a workshop on this. And I guess I'm curious how far we are going into this plan. Because I started reading the whole plan that you gave us in the binder. And there's just, there's things that don't make any sense. There's things that, I mean, our housing stock, we got, what, we got forty-one percent of housing stock according to that plan, if you read it. And it has two sections lumped into houses built before World War Two and houses built before nineteen thirty-nine, which if anybody remembers, World War Two was nineteen thirty-nine, that's when it started. So, um, we're missing like sixty or seventy-five percent of the housing stock in that paragraph, which, okay, so we, like, I didn't even continue on because I thought, "Okay, well, this is just so much in here that needs to be, it's just in the first ten pages." So, um, I have a bunch of comments. If, uh, you know, but just like David, I mean, I can email you a PDF too, or we can take this more into the workshop. Um, 'cause, uh, I just, there's, there's a lot of stuff, like, okay, the historic business district. Uh, we wanna take the characteristics of the historic town, town to the highway. And we just built a giant metal building next door, how does that play, right? This is our historic downtown, isn't it? Um, there's, the only constraint that we listed to reducing a town's carbon footprint was increasing energy prices. I would have a lot more constraints that we could list for that, we actually were constraints. Uh, energy prices go up, people are gonna spend less money. Also, energy prices are half of what they were, less than half, natural gas is way down. So, it's not just a continuing curve, so, um, or continuing line. So, I would just, I mean, I would go through, correct a lot of stuff in here. So, it would take a while to go through all my comments right now.
Yeah. Do you want, do you wanna stall?
Well, I was just gonna say, Cory, we can know, we can look up the goals. We can know chapter by chapter. And we can review the entire chapter. And then we launch this, review and finalize and finish it, we don't need this. That's one way of doing this. You could, or we could also pull out the goals and the objectives, only no actions, goals and objectives. And then you all can go to Mankas Days and have town hall meetings and say, "Are these objectives actually important?" And are we breaking them currently? Do we want to, 'cause I've heard a couple of that, want some feedback? Because it sounds like you're all happy with the goals. There's just, that's the one thing I think everyone sounds like they agree on, but the objectives and actions are potentially difficult and not user-friendly. And then maybe we should also be reviewing the entire comp plan. So, we can chase the goals and objectives and we can do a couple of things. Only goals and objectives for each chapter, make sure they're small enough, right?
Yeah.
And we can potentially throw some pictures in there and, you know, that kind of thing.
Can I add something real quick?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, what, what about the idea of having Jason take a more active role in putting these two plans together?
Well, this is.
Well, we're good, 'cause we got the Main Street, but we got the comp plan and, I mean, they're gonna be tied together.
So, you don't wanna do the comp plan?
I'm just discussing, I'm just, I mean.
This is your project.
Well, I, I think that, yeah, I think that the comp plan is for the whole town and beyond. And so, I think it deserves to live on its own merit. And I think that as we do whatever we do to this, we need to make sure that we're keeping in mind that we're gonna come up with this Main Street program and plug it into as-yet-undefined mapped area. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's kinda like, yes. Yeah, so, so much of the work is going into, it's just overlapping work, it's all the same idea. So, then he can go, "Oh, we're doing this, and we're doing this, and this, the comp plan says this, and Main Street says this, so how do we reconcile that?" And then we have one person kind of stilling it down and then, you know, giving us a much more polished version that I'm not gonna stop reading after twelve pages. Because it's, and not because it's uncomfortable, because it's just so much incorrect stuff that I'm tired of, you know, marking it up.
Yeah.
I just, I just am sitting here going, "What are we doing?" Um, I think what I, what I'm hearing, there's actually two processes happening. One is like an overhaul of the comp plan, kind of when you're getting at lots of overhaul of language updates. The other one is pulling out the pertinent data, so that it's useful, which is the goals and objectives, and kind of break it into something that's community-informed, but also usable on a quick basis by Jason, the grants, by us. And so, I'm like, I'm actually hearing there's two different things happening here. And that's where I'm confused, of like, "What are we doing? Like, what's the objective?"
If we're gonna pull out goals and objectives, we can do that and we can.
That seems like the low-hanging fruit.
If you wanna overhaul of the comp plan, we can either go through a chapter by chapter, or, oh, you could, or, uh, and, and that's okay. We can do it in-house. Or we can put this project off. Because if we're gonna do that, it's gonna require a ton of, if we're gonna overhaul the entire.
That's my concern.
It's gonna require a ton of public outreach, it's gonna require a ton of staff time, and it's gonna require a ton of your time. If you want to overhaul the entire plan, I recommend putting this in twenty twenty-six work plan and finding funding, surely this is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
I, so, I, I agree with that, that's kind of what I'm seeing, is like, this is maybe rewriting the comp plan as over our head as a board to do, and we don't wanna do it quick, we don't wanna do it wrong.
Who wrote it in two thousand eleven, though?
An intern.
An intern.
So, this is over our head? An intern did it in two thousand eleven, but we can't.
The board was writing a mission this whole way a few years ago.
Yeah, yeah. So, what, what I'm thinking after listening to everybody here, um, I, I think that if we pulled out the stuff that Heather's talking about, brought that to Mankas Days, rewritten to be in normal people English, then people would be able to digest it better and actually it could make sense to them. You know, staying with the substance, but, but just, you know, like better wording, um, a, a different, like an actual outline layout, um, and.
User-friendly.
Yeah, much more user-friendly. But I, I think that's a really good starting point.
Yeah.
Because then, once we figure that little bit out, it's like eating an owl, one bite, you can find lots of texture, right? And so, um, so I think that would be like a good step one. Once we get a feel for it, if people are like, "This goal is stupid," well, then if we agree, we don't have to work on it.
Well, that's, I think, what I'm getting at, is what's.
Then, I think.
It seems like goals and objectives.
And.
What you're saying, I, I think is accurate, I do, I, you know.
And, and then, I agree with Daniel, I think the whole thing needs a huge overhaul.
It's a big project.
Not only just editing the language, but when I was looking through it, and I, I marked up my, uh, paper copy, um, the, it seemed to me, if my memory is accurate, um, it seemed to me that we've already completed some of the things. And so, I think if they're done and we don't need to do them again, unless we say maintain whatever, um, then we can get rid of those and maybe end up with a smaller document in total. Um, so.
Yeah, shorter, I think, is very important, because, I don't know who's ever read this. One, one guy raised his hand.
Support from this staff and what's.
Is anybody using it?
Hang on.
No, we read it when P and Z reviewed it, like, I, we read every chapter, and we did this like two years ago.
Yeah.
That's why I'm like, "Oh, my God, we're using it again." Without like an informed process, and when I say over our head, I don't mean like we can't do it, I just mean like, let's do this in a thoughtful way and not just rush into it.
Yeah.
We just did this two years ago at P and Z. So, I'm like, wait, so that's what I'm like.
This whole plan that I read the other day was looked at and went over completely two years ago.
Correct by the way, we should.
Have you been to a planning zone?
Okay.
Well, so, if you're on, I'll pull out both of the objectives.
Yeah.
Work on, maybe that we already did, but I may need to spell. So, once we have a plan, I think Jason and I are gonna be working on this project together. I just need a plan before making work on it. So, we're gonna pull out goals and objectives, make it user-friendly. By the time that's done and it comes back to you with our paperwork done with this, um, it may be time for Mankas Days, another mission, certain results will probably also be maxed out. Maybe it's the last year, judgmental decisions, um, and we can talk about some templates.
And I think when we were working on, and we had that greatly attended meeting, um.
You know the decision statement?
Yeah, um, we did a lot of extra work that, well, the people that showed up, um, did a lot of extra work that wasn't exactly vision statement, but they gave us a lot of really good information. And I would love to see, uh, that incorporated into, um, action items and objectives and things like that. So, I, I would ask that we pull that in to the extent possible.
Yeah, I'll pull that, I know it's somewhere on the town share, I'll try to pull it out. I know we used a lot of it, ended up being a person, so we used a ton of it in our master.
That's right.
Yeah, like the work plan, yeah.
Um, and then, but some of it I remember not, us not being able to use, like, you know, in the town newspaper.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? But so, I will try to go, I know we could use that in other projects, so, um.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, we're just gonna pull out goals and objectives and figure out, I'm actually visualizing some opportunities. User-friendly document.
Oh, yeah, definitely, don't, yeah, just play terms.
Yeah.
Make it easy, I'm sure.
Yeah, 'cause people at Mankas Days are not gonna stand there and read fifty-two pages, so.
Well, and, and so, we're doing it like, you know, to explain this, people talk to them, get their feedback, whatever it is, right? This needs to be like a broad stroke, like, idea of, you know, here's kind of, here's, the goal is, here's the bullet points and things we want, not. You know, they don't, we're not gonna have all the details, you know, of every little step of it. It's like, you know, is this important to you? Like, do you like cars or do you like trucks? Cool, like, you know, not make model engine, tire size lift, like, we don't care right now, right? Like, it's a.
We'll get there.
Broad holes of, we're getting there.
And then, yeah, and to your point, Cory, uh, then, once we get the, more of the like closed-ended questions answered, you know, is this in or out, uh, thumbs up, thumbs down, what, however we do it, um, then, uh, we could have a series of meetings. And each one would be like a public meeting on one of the goals. And, and then, the people that care about that can come.
Stuff, we can, yeah. Let's get down to a concise, like a clear, concise, you know, chapter for each thing, getting down to this point, like, and we could, we'll get it down to where like, here's the important things that we need in here, here's, you know, the details, but have it put together comprehensively and concise and try to compact it and not lose any of its, you know, gravity or purpose.
Yeah, Heather?
No, I've got it.
Okay, you were smiling.
I think I've got it. The problem is that there's like, like twelve or thirteen chapters.
Yeah.
Sense of place, transportation.
Some of those can be.
Some of them can be combined.
Combined, I think.
Well, that may be something else. So, what I'm gonna do is, I'm, I may, I may, because again, we can create a pretty document. That's, that's a matter of a couple hours' worth of work, once we have the data.
Right.
My concern is that we're gonna spend the time reading the document and here's something like, "Oh, yeah, well, we don't like that data." Now that we've seen it in a pretty format, we're paying attention, and we don't like that data.
Yeah.
Um, which could potentially then affect or not including actions. So, there, there may be a trickle-down, I just wanna make sure that the work that you do is actually something that we can go back and put in, in the document. So, what I might do is just pull out goals and objectives for each chapter. Give you the chapter number and the title, so if you wanna go look at chapter two, read the entire chapter two, see how those goals and objectives apply to them. Text, you can do that, um, create a draft, public-facing document with just goals and objectives and help them. Um, or workshop or something to be like, "Okay." So, here's the data that we use, and here's what it looks like in, in the document that the public can play on.
It's a good idea, we should check ourselves as we go, so we know, agree, like.
Because I think that is been what happened in the last version, it is hugely overwhelming. And it's not that you all are not capable of doing it, but the problem is, you also have other stuff. So, when you're working on the comp plan, every single meeting, you're seeing two or three chapters for a solid year. Six months in, no offense, but you guys have checked out, because something else is coming up that's important.
Well, that's what happened at P and Z, it felt like, it was like a read-along, where it's just reading the chapter. And it was, it became more about commas and periods and formatting than it did about content, it just kind of got lost.
Well, that's why I thought Jason could bring in, uh, you know, ideas to type, you know? Because we need someone to summarize it or distill it down or, I mean, I would like a document that's used. That would be my goal, a document, a plan that, that town employees can look at and go, "This is what the board wants." Again, this is what we're doing, not something that's just, "Why do we have this plan?" Who's you, you know?
I think Jason is more than capable of qualifying, but he also has a bunch of other stuff on the work plan.
Yeah, it's not a dust.
That's where I think, if you're gonna overhaul the comp plan, I think you need a consultant. Or, you know, even though Jason's worked on it for two years, it's not. Because I think it's so.
Well, I was looking at what Bayfield did and what they, they got, that took them a year. And they added what? They had a steering committee and, I mean, we could look to a model like that.
You can do that. I'm happy to do whatever you.
Didn't Delores, Delores just did theirs too.
Yeah.
Can you start with what you, like, bring the objectives and goals, pull out? And let's use that as fuel, we have, we already have this in our, um, retreat workshop, right? Conversation about this.
If this is, yeah, this, I think.
You're talking about it in your retreat.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I can handle it, like I said, I can handle it, however you guys wanna handle it, I just, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding what you're asking for, sorry.
Yeah, no, I think we're all, yeah, the main is the, the pulling out the goals, right? We all kind of agreed on pulling out the goals and then getting some community feedback first, right?
That's the first step, yeah.
Yeah.
I like the idea of consultant down the road.
I think if you wanna overhaul your entire comp plan, I think it's all the same.
Can we put that?
Because it's gonna look nothing like what it looks like.
Exactly, and that's the point, though, right? But that's the point.
Yes.
Um, but maybe we could put that out there in twelve, twenty-four months, like, we're.
We can do that, if you want, um, if you know for a fact that you're gonna do this, we can put it on a twenty twenty-six work plan.
I'd like to.
And we can go buy the grant money and, you know. And we can go buy and grant money, and, you know what I mean, we can do that.
I'd I'd like to see that.
I mean, I think this needs, it's a moment in time where we should look to the future, yeah.
And if we can do some, you know, preliminary stuff now, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Yeah, to feed into it, I think, set us up for next year, that's really was.
So, we'll pull out the goals and objectives and remember, you can make it charming, I bring that back to you. And like I said, by default, we may have a vision statement, so maybe what we'll do is pull out, make a user friendly, and then just put some comments or whatever in there. Or then say, you know, this is completed, so it can come out, we're gonna give you what's there.
Yeah.
Um and then we can say this is completed, and we can come out, I'm not gonna remove something. Because it may spark something, but you're like, okay, now that you've done that, I want you to do this, so. But um and then when we have the vision statement stuff, Jason and I will put some.
Yeah.
Information in there, if there's something in one of these goals or objectives that hits high on the vision statement, then we'll bring it back to you. I do not know that we can do that by the last um.
I don't think we need that.
I mean, we may be able to make a future document, but we won't have a vision statement.
I don't think it needs to be by the next meeting.
Yeah, right, just something before.
Like four weeks, six weeks now.
So, yeah, once the vision statement is done, compiled and okay, then we'll we'll get back to you.
And and I do just wanna caution, like, we can say if we prefer staff or consultant. But we need to be careful that we're not directing staff directly. To be redundant in the sentence, um cuz that Heather's in charge of the staff, and so, we just need to be real kind of soon with that. Um cuz if we start telling individual staff people what they should be doing. We're outside our boundaries and we can be personally liable, so just to protect ourselves, we need to be really cautious about that. Um and uh yeah, but I think that was a really good discussion, because y'all brought up stuff that I didn't. Think of and yeah, so thank you all for really diving into it, and I'm surprised you got to page twelve. I gave up before that.
I'm looking over your shoulder, I'm impressed with the note taking.
Yeah, that's pretty phenomenal.
Well, I mean, you're gonna conduct a climate risk assessment, like states don't even do that, I mean, come on. We don't have the resources or anybody, I mean, like, that's the type of stuff I'm talking about, it's aspirational, you can't do it.
I totally agree with you, uh.
Yeah.
I'm much more. A much more matter-of-fact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um so.
And I.
I could be.
Comp plan is just really odd pages and then two public, five pages.
I would love that. I can shorten documents like crazy, so that's why.
If you're listening to me, take out the action, just hear the staff, and give the public the goals and objectives, because the actions change.
Yes.
Every year.
Okay, hold on, Corey's got something.
Say is it needs to be, like, in my head, looking at it, like, from my world, is. Like, your goals need to be actionable and achievable, and from this level, that's it. Right, like, we're we're like, here's the plan, here's what we wanna achieve, and then we put it out there. Right, because it does change, it's gonna, you know, things change, situations change, conditions change, like. We, you can't put every contingency into this, and like to your point, you know, do a climate thing like I did every morning when I walk outside. I don't need a jacket today, like, that's the end of it, right, but we can't do it on this scale, that's not achievable. If it is actionable, we can afford it, but for us, that's not achievable, this is not a good goal for us.
It's actually part of life, you know, we can't do that. Yeah.
Okay.
On the work plan, this is a photograph, where we tie the each, each item back to a comp plan in some way. Do you guys like that?
Yes.
I do, yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And and I actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because um I actually had in my notes to do that on the work plan. As well as maybe in staff reports. So, just a little section, and that's why I was saying we need a real outline, so like, goal A. You know, objective B, and then action item one, or, you know, however, but like. Um a real outline, because that way you can just put like that string citation in. So that, yeah, because then that can build toward, one, we can go look up. In our document what that is pertaining to, and. It can also help us build kind of a report card to the public, to show our um advancement on these things. So that we're not just um in people's minds, like, spending all this time and money on things and then. Collecting dust with them, you know, and so I think especially if we're going into asking for. A sales tax increase, you know, that we need to show them. Um that we are actually working for, you know, working on these plans.
Yeah, to do it, our math teachers all told us, should we work?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm gonna save that.
Yeah.
And once you guys have. Have gone through and made sure that your goals and your objectives have gotten public feedback, once that public facing document is finalized. Then, I'm gonna go to my calendar and just keep it forward to the special staff. Then, under policy implications on staff reports is where we will say comp plan chapter two. But even if we just say chapter two or chapter three, you know what I mean? And that way, staff doesn't have to have the comp plan in and out, in and out, and always have to be trying to memorize the comp plan.
Yeah.
While writing staff reports, but you can memorize the chapters, we know the chapter, because sense of space, the chapter four is infrastructure. For sense of place, you know, so.
Yeah.
So, you won't see that one immediately, but I've um I've got that note down for when the process is complete, you will see that.
Yeah, I just, I I really think that would help with our push toward transparency.
You'll see it on work.
Yeah, and connectedness, connecting all these things we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, um, okay, anything else on that topic? All right, um I have a point of order question, there were a couple of things that I think I was supposed to read during announcements. And I missed them, um. Can I do that now? I'll, I'll do it now, um, dear Heather and board members, on behalf of the Cancer Resource Alliance Board, I wanna thank you sincerely. For awarding us fifteen hundred dollars, our mission to provide financial assistance to all Monizuma and Delores County cancer patients. Continues because of your and other grantors' continued support of us, as a result, we've been able to maintain our viability for over ten years. Sincerely, Sue Tompkins, Treasurer of the Cancer Resource Alliance. That was very nice, and then we got a card from Southwest Health Systems. And it says, Heather, this is long overdue, thank you, you have welcomed me in my role at SHS with open arms. And been unwavering in your support of healthcare, I can hardly list all the ways you are making a difference. Encouraging the something trustees.
Thinking more through the career path.
Something to, yeah, I'm sorry, this is very sweet and dering right here.
It's like a doctor wrote it or something. Encouraging trustees to visit and, uh, visit. And, oh, uh, oh, the the H S H S.
Oh, I think it was the visit, yeah, the facility, yep, I think you're right.
Yeah, you go ahead and read the rest of that.
Um, sorry.
Yeah, glasses up.
Yeah, it's it's um. Reposting information through the town, uh letters of support and more. Uh Mankas and Southwest Colorado are lucky to have your leadership, uh. Looking forward to continuing to work together, uh kindly, soup. Joe, okay.
Yeah, that's a J.
Sorry.
Say soup?
He wanted to thank you all.
Yeah.
It's a great doctor. He probably appreciates it.
Yeah, that's super, um, so anyway, thank them, we'll put it back in a little packet, thank you. All right, so, um, next item is J, items for the April twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five meeting. Um begins at six, so the meeting begins at six.
Workshop begins at five thirty?
Workshop begins at five thirty, and uh so this is what we approved a few meetings ago, um. So, on the doc, our workshop comprehensive plan discussion, um in. Oh, okay, because we've already kind of given you. Okay.
There's something you all wanna talk about, but I gotta focus on some.
Okay, um, uh consent agenda will contain April nine minutes, committee update report. Um and then uh twenty-twenty-five second round agency contribution applications. First quarter twenty-twenty-five financial and work plan update, board retreat discussion, region nine housing needs assessment, grant letter of interest. Excuse me, and public hearing ordinance seven eight eight, series twenty-twenty-five regarding flag lots. And um the C I P discussion, or crisis intervention.
Intervention.
Community intervention, okay.
Wayne would appreciate that.
Has been moved to the last week. Um, we, there was a general mistake in the application for public hearing, changes to lawyer in this code. So, um they they're gonna go ahead and rebrand those boards, so we have to.
Oh, for the flag?
Public hearings for the flag.
Oh, for the.
For the flag lots.
For the flag lots, they posted a board twice and missed funding commission. So, we were pushing that to May, because we.
Okay, hmm, all right, thank you.
And you may at some point, maybe follow our main street program. Not, no, I'm not.
Say that again?
The Main Street.
Main Street, okay.
And then, you know, once they finish their degree, then we have next up to you, uh, the main street program.
Okay. Cool. Um, any other items that we wanna see on that agenda? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I wanted to just, oh, before we adjourn.
Okay.
I wanted to get some kind of formal understanding of what happened with the Marshall Building.
Oh.
What happened with the, oh, that's why.
Yes.
There was a plumbing failure, and the building is, was completely flooded. Inches of water in the entire downstairs.
From the ceiling, right?
And they came out of the ceiling, so the downstairs, the floors were compromised, um. Insurance is taking care of that, and they believe August or September is in. So, keep you well posted, there was a gesture of last year.
Things have changed since.
Oh, awesome, well, I was wrong.
Will be, uh, you know, be occupied again to its original state two weeks ago in June. Ploring is scheduled for the third week in May, uh and we have kids. Um insulation, drywall, everything will come back in, starting Friday to next week, meaning it will be a problem. The next week, uh electrician will come in for another final, to put everything back together, flooring, plumbing, and maintenance. So, um, the, we were able to mitigate the loss that was in the batteries, it would have been, um, biggest. Time needs is the evidence locker, there's a lot to do with that, so, uh, we had to reorder those, and they come out on a period. Um, so, just depends on when they land, when the evidence will be able to be used.
And when, Heather, when you said insurance is coming, is it our insurance or is it the subcontractor's insurance?
Yep. What about these smart meters? Why didn't our smart meter pick this up and stop it before?
Well, our smart meters can't, um, they don't turn water on.
Well, but they should, don't they, the whole smart meter is is reading it every fifteen or thirty minutes and sending it back. And then the software should.
The s- the software, well, they're not gonna shut the lever off, and it's gonna give it an alarm, which I I don't believe kind of listed, but it's not going to. Unless Terry, don't they tell us if there's.
Hmm, so it's just a small.
But the software reads a constant flow, I mean, the software, the algorithms are trained to pick up events like that. That's what a smart meter is, as far as I understand it. But it's the software that makes it smart, and the pinging the system every fifteen minutes so that we get the data. And then the software knows, like, oh, this is constantly running, so.
They don't do alarms, they don't, they don't go carry a phone.
The smart meter records every fifteen minutes, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. But we don't get that data unless we go out with a reading system.
But why, why not then, how is, how are these smart meters then, if we don't get it? Like, it's like leak detection and prevention is one of the main fundamental things that a smart meter is designed for, so.
I I guess we could have spent more, but we did not. But we don't have the budget for.
Yeah, we bought.
So, what makes, what makes, what is smart about?
What we went from, so what we went from was, we read once a month, and you only get a reading once a month, so we have no idea what happens in the. No, no, no. Now, those meters are reading it, so when he goes out to read, or if someone comes in and says, what's happening with my water? We can now pull thirty days' worth of data and say, it looks like there was a spike here. Um or, no, we see no spike, so we don't have the system that alarms our phones every time there's a spike. What we have now is the ability to pull reports that say, at nine oh five AM on March thirteenth. It looks like for fifteen minutes you were running a washing, or it looks like there was a leak for.
So, we don't have the software?
It's not live data.
The alarms, the staff.
Yeah, it's not like a water flow alarm, like you set up a sprinkler.
The only, the only place we have that is at our water conservers, we don't have that on every fifteen minutes.
Yeah, we can't afford that.
When we looked into getting smart meters in a huge tower by on Town Hall.
So, it's real town?
Would be, they said it wasn't just a fly hole for our small town. And it would be in excess of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So, how do they send da, if we need a tower for them to get data, how do they send data now?
They don't, we go collect the data.
So, you do the truck driving by, radio transponder picks it up, right, okay, so they're, okay, so we went with the cheap smart meters, not the smart. Cuz I guess, cuz from what I, my research, those aren't, those aren't smart meters, they're just, that just, we don't have to lift the lid anymore, we can just drive by, which is faster. More efficient, but.
Hold on, hold on, just take a breath, everybody, okay, Heather.
Smart meter, they have, we can go pull. Uh data twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week off of one meter if we need to. They are a lot more accurate than the old meters, and the old meters.
Yeah, sure.
We could not pull any data, period.
Right.
No data, now, if somebody, if we have high water bill and Mercedes request, we can go pull the data. And show that person exactly what the issue is, and how much water they use. And I am going to incorporate it in my weekly. Routine to take the reader, download the meters, and in my daily routes around town. It will automatically pick up and tell us if we have static leak or if we have a critical.
Yeah, but we gotta be dri, yeah, we gotta be driving around to get that, which is why I didn't get the Marshall's building, so.
Right.
And I'm just, that's all, I'm just trying to dig into it and understand, so.
And if we have a critical leak, like a main water break, that goes to the SCADA system of water plant. Kyle sees that and then Kyle immediately notifies me.
So.
So, it's really bad timing, and what happened at night or something?
It was on. And maybe you have actually.
So.
You know, the guys are popping in and out.
Yeah.
I do, we've seen a trend in home building, insurance companies requiring us to put in um shut-off valves. That it, you know, it is reading, and if it sees an abnormal anomaly, it'll shut down the water to the house. You can actually, if you call your insurance company, you can save about ten percent on your insurance if you install one of these, but we're seeing a trend in new builds. They're requiring homeowners to put these in, so there there are devices that our insurance requires that do that type. They're requiring homeowners to put these in, so there, there are devices that our insurance requires that do that type of thing, but it's beyond, like, it's an individual property type thing. Yeah, it's a citizen.
It's like a whole house or.
Yeah, it's, it goes on your main and it's.
It senses.
There'll be water flow, I mean, it's like a sprinkler system. Yeah, it just prevents flooding.
As soon as it notices a pressure change, they usually run up a pressure device.
Yeah, exactly.
So, and it's anything plus or minus, you know, ten or twenty, whatever you have, depending on your system.
Yeah.
Um, but it has a static of, you know, let's say your building has sixty PSI all the time, and then it drops to forty because. The sprinkler system activates that, sends out the alarm. Um, or we can have them with an impeller, and then they will go on a static system. As soon as water moves, it sets it off, because it's a system that should not have water.
Yeah.
So they go two different ways depending on what you're doing, but they do make the. Ones that are monitoring pressure, and if there's a drop in pressure or a spike in pressure, that it'll work. And that would be more what the insurance companies look for, because, you know, you have a fifteen PSI drop in your water pressure, that means something digs open. You know, and generally, unless you turn on everything all at once.
Do you want us to put this on the nice workshop and regular reports and stuff that we can get down if you couldn't get before, just so you guys have a lot of understanding on here?
I would say what might be fun, um, because I'm curious as well, is just pick something like our, um, community center. And, you know, public buildings, so we're not using anybody's personal data, um, and, and then just kind of show us, you know, what you would get if you pull it monthly. Or daily, and just kind of show us like an example report that, that's real, not like just, you know, something their marketing department.
And the smart meter will also. I mean, it'll detect a minor leak or a critical leak, if there's a backflow deal, it will collect that, and if somebody puts a magnet. On the meter.
Oh, does that?
That will tell us also.
What does the magnet do?
Scramble it?
We shouldn't talk about that.
It, it tells us.
Let's go to the regular session.
So, yeah, so we're pretty, because smart meters for us, it allows us to collect data. I guess would be what our original goal was, so bring, make sure it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, so is it store the data and then as you drive by, it, it updates whatever it's got there?
Which.
So then you've got day, you got timeframe usage, like every hour you can see different patterns and stuff then.
Somebody comes in and says, there's no way I use that much water, we can go pull.
Right, tracks their house, so you get them.
And then come back, we send that. To the cloud, and then Mercedes, Mercedes prints it off, shows the press tour exactly, what, how much.
Yeah, so into, into the truck, and then when the truck parks back here.
Send it to.
Got it, okay.
So then they can look at it and say, oh, right, my family, I have twenty extended relatives with visiting, and.
Yeah.
Everybody had to have a shower or whatever, or.
I wonder if you're using that, I think you got it for three days.
Correct me if I'm, yeah.
It, it's related to the Marshall's office, totally.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're getting them a little off topic.
Okay, perfect.
Sorry, I, I don't want to shut down the locations, but.
Let's go.
We can do it one of the years, all right, so.
We'll do the workshop, and then you guys can talk on, you know, just.
That'd be great, um, okay, so I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, let's go.